I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. Next is public comments. Do we have anyone signed up?
Real quick, it says we're in practice session online. I don't know if that matters.
Do we have to start again? Okay.
They didn't hear us start.
Oh, right. And we're going to just open the meeting again? All right. I'm going to call tonight's meeting to order. Roll call, please.
Mayor Pro Tem Wal.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Page.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
And Councilmember Woodard.
Attending remotely via teleconference.
That concludes roll call.
Thank you. And next we have public comments.
No one has signed up in person to speak in person and no one signed up to comment online.
All right. So next on our agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you, Mayor. Mayor Pro Tem and members of council. A couple of things to mention. I wanted to mention the parade that we had last week. It was a good time. Weather was great. The groups were a little bit down this year and we're going to look to see how we can improve that for next year, the participants in the parades, not the groups themselves. I wanted to remind everybody about National Night Out. It's on Tuesday, August 5th, and that'll be at Evergreen. And that's going to be a lot of fun. It always is every year. Wanted to mention as well that we are going to be applying for a TIB grant, I've mentioned that to all of you, for a smaller chunk of our Main Street project. That grant is due August 15th and we're in the process of finalizing the information for that and we'll have it in and done on time. And I had some notes written down here that I don't remember what they are. So if I do, I'll mention it later, but oh, that's what it is. We don't have a council meeting next week because it's the fifth Thursday. July has five Thursdays, so we don't have a meeting next week, but our next meeting will be held on August 7th. Happy to answer any questions.
Do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Murray.
Thank you, Mayor. And thank you, city manager, for the update. Is there an ask of the council members at National Night Out? Is there some expectation of us in terms of timing or where we should be or anything like that?
Come and have a good time and I will find you all for pictures.
Okay. Well, we usually meet at a certain time, at a certain place, but we are like herding cats. I know. Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Really, this is for the city clerk. We haven't done our report outs in a while. Would it be best to put them in a Word document and send them to you in advance or just let it flow and you'll just take the notes?
I can just take the notes. Thank you.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Can I ask for a clarification on that because I thought it was that we could only give report outs on what the city clerk hears at a meeting?
I think by sending the clerk the notes early, she's able to more quickly take the notes, so especially when we have a long, it's not official. It's when we have a long break like we have had this month in July, just makes it a little bit easier on her to keep up.
So it's an expectation at every meeting we could send those in?
You could, but it's not an expectation.
Okay. So how far back do we go on this one?
I think it's the end of June was the last council reports.
Can I just do one more clarification? When we report out that we've attended a meeting, I feel bad for the clerk having to write that because it looks like some of us attend and some of us don't. So is there a clarification on whether we report out if we attend a council meeting or a work session? We haven't talked about these rules in a long time, so.
Yeah, I think that's up to council. It's not, there's no hard and fast rule on that.
So it looks like some of us attend and some of us don't, so every meeting that each council member needs to say that they attended the last council meeting and the last workshop meeting because we've never had to report out that we've attended those meetings, but I noticed they're in the minutes and it looks like part of the council attends and part of it doesn't.
Again, no hard and fast rule.
I always figured that our attendance on our council agenda says that we're there or not, so I never mention the meetings, just the ones that we go to outside our council. Anyone else? Councilmember Woodard, is that still the old hand or a new hand?
No, that's a new hand. I'd love to stay and hash this out because we at one point didn't talk about a lot of things. You only actually reported out on a commission topic, if you will, and then we expanded it. So I appreciate the conversation. I always did think that was a little weird that we would say, but we've done it for six years, so before we mixed this up. So from where I sit, granted six years is not long, but it is in a row in the one we're in now, which is why I'm saying that, that I have noticed that we have given, yes, I was at this study session and I was at this regular meeting. I'm happy to cut those out. That said, that's one person's vote, but you had a second person, original person, bring it up as a, why are we doing that, in essence, if I'm hearing correctly? So since it's our discretion, how about we decide what that discretion is right now? We did that before. That's how we added more things into the mix, if you will.
Councilmember Sonmore.
When did we add it into the mix? So maybe we should just put this on if it's going to be a bigger thing. Maybe we put it on a meeting and we look at the rules and regulations because I understand what Steve's saying, but it's changed over time. Years ago, we couldn't report, say what meetings we're at. We could only do our liaison meetings and then they've grown. And sometimes our report outs are longer than our actual meetings and so maybe we could just take the time and hear what everybody else wants to do because I don't want to put anybody on the spot right now.
Yeah, and I would just second what I'm hearing said because in the mix is when we changed it to not just liaison reports and we opened it up and that was in my six years. So that would be my answer, when did we add things into the mix? It was when we decided it wouldn't just be the liaison reports because there's only so many liaison ships, so that actually left some people with nothing to say. And if I recall correctly, we started down this path so that we could show our residents that your council members are engaged in the community. But if we want to revisit that as a larger conversation, we can do that. It seems to me like we were just talking about, do we talk about things that are already in the record? Right? That's to me the question of, why would I say I was here tonight when I just said that 20 minutes ago, but I got to do it again next week in the quote-unquote council report which is two weeks from now, I recognize. So not trying to make a big deal out of it, I just appreciated the point because I do have long reports and if I can cut things out because they're already in the record, happy to do so, which is why I raised the question, do you want me to send it in advance? I know some of us are two, three, four. Dr. Woodard's usually a lot longer than that, so I'm just trying to keep my city clerk from getting carpal tunnel.
I'd be happy to add that to a future agenda sometime in the next couple of months.
Councilmember Sonmore.
I don't have any issue with writing it to the city clerk. I just was saying if, we don't have to report out that I attended tonight's work session or I attended city council meeting because the mayor already said it's already there. That's what I was just addressing.
Anyone else? Is that a new hand? Councilmember Woodard?
Not that time.
Okay. All right. So if we're done with that, we'll go on to the presentation on the financial forecast by Baker Tilly. Is this with, okay, with Carolyn Hope and?
Yep. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, city council members. Happy to be here tonight. Just wanted to introduce our guest, Steve Toler, who's director at Baker Tilly, and he's joined by our finance director, Sirke Salmanin. And we're here tonight to review the long-range forecasts that Baker Tilly helped us put together. Your city council financial policies require us to do a long-range financial forecast every year and we wanted to take a look at our model and have a third party review our forecast to look at new ways of doing it, evaluate our accuracy, and give us ideas moving forward as we look at a long-range plan. And so this will be supporting our fiscal sustainability task force and your future decisions. So thank you.
I'm sorry, if somebody's talking, we're not hearing it online.
There we go. No, no, sorry, we weren't talking. We were just trying to get the slide deck up for you, Steve. So, good evening, Madam Mayor and members of the council. It's nice to be with you again. And I'm Steve Toler, Director with Baker Tilly. And tonight, we're going to be discussing the long-range financial forecast. Just to give you an update about that, I will want to start saying that we came in yesterday and participated in the first fiscal sustainability task force meeting. Great conversations with the folks there and really looking forward to working with them and helping to support them and supporting you and giving you the, informing, you know, your decisions ultimately about fiscal sustainability in the town here. So very thankful for that opportunity and I think you've got a great group, so. So with that, let me just go into kind of what we're talking about tonight. And this project that you've asked for our assistance in is, was really twofold. One was to inform the existing forecast that you have and to provide our insights into that, and that's what I'm sharing with you tonight. It's a very important part of this whole fiscal sustainability project because it's kind of like when you think about it, when you go to the doctor and, you know, you have all the lab work done and all that stuff, all the numbers that come out from all the different lab work that you have done, it helps to tell a story about what's going on, right? So that you can understand, okay, what do we have to do to make you healthy? And that's the same type of analogy here when it comes to a forecast. It's the diagnostic to help understand and help inform you as the council members and the decision-makers as well as staff in terms of what the future holds and, you know, understanding what it is that we're trying to solve. So that's what that's about. So that's what we're going to be going through tonight. And what I want to remind us all is that financial forecasting, it's basically math. It's spreadsheets or it's whatever tool that you use to try to project what the future might hold. But ultimately, what makes it credible and makes it helpful is really that it's got accurate baseline information that we're looking at, that it's got realistic assumptions upon which it's based, and that it really helps tell the story about where you are. And there's one thing that I'm going to be saying throughout tonight and you'll hear it, you know, time and time again when you see me. The numbers never sleep. You know, I mean, if you think about, if we had done this forecast as part of the budget adoption, that would have helped tell a story for you, right? In fact, one was done, right? And then less than two months after the budget went into effect, we had a new administration take office and all of a sudden there's talks about tariffs and economy and what's going on and fiscal policy and what's happening. And so everything changes, right? And so what we're sharing with you tonight is the latest information that we have that's based on the 2526 adopted budget and for what we know today. But as we walk through this process over the next few months and as well as, you know, ultimately, when it comes before the council, you know, we're going to be updating the forecast as we go. So with that as an understanding, let me just kind of give a little bit of a more background about what financial forecasting is. The purpose is really to help to inform your decision-making capabilities, right? It's useful when it's credible and understandable, but it also needs to be linked to your fiscal practices, your financial practices. And one of the key ones of that is your reserve policies as well as some of the other financial policies that are there. And we're going to talk about reserve policy tonight as I go through this. But the other piece that's really important to understand in a forecast is, remember what Grandma used to say to me sometimes, the serenity prayer, you know, give me the, you know, ability to accept the things I cannot change, the courage, the serenity, right? The courage to change the things I can and the wisdom to know the difference. And when it comes to a forecast, we need to understand that there are some things that we can change. We can turn some dials when it comes to the services that we want to provide, you know, what we want to do with respect to compensation of our employees, what we want to do in terms of fees and charges, but there are some things that are outside of our control, the economy, the regional and federal economy, and even with respect to sometimes tax measures that would need to go forward. And so it's understanding those dials and what the controllability is. You know, I just want to make the plea in terms of why forecasting matters and you have a history of doing that. And frankly, every city in Washington State County, as well as the state, is required to prepare a long-range forecast. And in Washington State here, it's typically done in a six-year timeframe. And it really, it surprises me outside of Washington State, how many agencies do not have a financial forecast? Even to today, they're making decisions based on an annual basis and not really looking at what the long-term implications are of some of the decisions that they're making. And what really makes them valuable is really that it's linked to and helps inform your strategic priorities so that you understand whether you have the resources to be able to do the things that you want to do. And the earlier that we can understand if there's an issue or a problem coming, the better it is. Just like with the health analogy that I used before, the earlier you have identified there's something going on, the easier it is to take care of, right? And it really helps, I think, a forecast helps build transparency as well as credibility for you in terms of speaking with the community about, you know, how things are looking and where things are going so that it's helping you not only affect today's decision tomorrow, but really with that engagement that we have with the community, help support smarter and phased, you know, decisions so that you can understand what some of the long-term implications are for capital investments as well as, you know, debt and infrastructure type needs as you're having on a long-term basis. One thing that you'll see in the financial forecast that we're going to be talking about tonight is while in Washington State here, typically it's done in six years, and let's face it, when you're crystal ball gazing out just even three or four years, it's rather fuzzy, right? But what's important to understand in a fiscal model is that it's not trying to predict accuracy as much as the trend and the storytelling and the informing your decisions about the impacts of long-term, you know, today's decisions for the long term. And so really understanding what those issues are that are out in the long term. There may be some commitments beyond six years. For example, you have a go-bond right now, which you're aware of, that the general fund is paying for, that extends until 2048. So it's well beyond a six-year period for sure, but just imagine that if we had some debt that's coming up that's seven or eight years from now, maybe lapsing, it might make some, change some ways in terms of whether you move forward with an infrastructure project today or whether you wait for later. So those types of things I think are really important as well, as well as the lumpiness of infrastructure improvements where if you know you have a $20 or $30 million library refurbishment or a city hall thing that's coming up in years seven or eight, seven or eight, it helps you really be able to see and plan for that for the future. So, you know, anyway, so there are several, you know, reasons why it makes sense to at least look at the 10-year horizon, and that's what we're going to be showing you tonight. We're also going to be encouraging the fiscal sustainability task force to look at as well so that way we can really understand what the long-term implications are of some of the strategic elements are that we put in to make sure that you're fiscally sustainable long-term. So the foundations of the financial forecast, I just want to talk about four buckets, if you will. Firstly, as I mentioned before, it's math, but what really makes them powerful is not only the accuracy of the data upon which it's based, but the assumptions. And I like to use the phrase realistically conservative assumptions, is that at some point, I think those of us left-brained finance people want to definitely under-promise and over-deliver and we want to be conservative. But you get to the point where if you're ultra-conservative and you're, let's say, under-forecasting revenues, it takes away the ability for you as decision-makers to make informed decisions about what the future holds. I've been working with agencies where their forecasts, they miss the revenue target consistently year after year by 20%. Can you imagine 20% of your revenue stream, which is about $20 million in your general fund a year, if $4 million is all, you're always, you know, you know, under-promising and over-delivering that, it's taken away that ability for you to really understand what the future holds and how you want to address some of the needs that you have. And so we focus on realistically conservative assumptions on both the revenue side and the expenditure side as well. A good forecast needs to plan for recessions. When you look back over the last 100 years, on average, recessions happen about once every 5.8 years at the federal level as well as the local level. Since 1980 and since some of the changes were made in terms of federal policy, monetary policy, et cetera, we, the magnitude as well as the timing of those recessions have lengthened a little bit. So the average is about seven to eight years or so now. So, but it's important to plan for that, especially when you're looking at a long-range forecast and when we know that the last recession that we had was in 2020, mostly pandemic-related or, you know, there may have been some things that were going on before that, and the year, the time prior to that was about 13 years, right? And so it ebbs and flows, but it's important to just keep that in mind when you're doing your forecasting. And so recessions is an important part. A good forecast will be dynamic to allow you to, on the fly, be able to see the impact of different alternate scenarios to help, again, you understand your planning for different things as well as this, you know, ability to look at flexible planning periods. So if you want to focus on the next five or six years, that's great, but if you can see within the next 10 years or even 20 years, especially when it relates to capital needs, it's really helpful to be able to see that. So what we have done as part of this project, it wasn't part of our scope, but we have decided to just give it to you, is we've created a new fiscal model for Sirke and her team and the rest of the staff here to be able to use. It's got a dynamic dashboard with it. We took in all of the information from your general ledger and it was, you know, using as a starting point the forecast that you already have and it gives you a little bit more granularity in terms of being able to use it for a forecast, something that I wanted to make sure you all had because it's going to be a really powerful tool for you to be able to do a lot of this what-if type of analysis, et cetera. And that's kind of what you're seeing here on the screenshots is just, you know, it's got a dynamic dashboard with it. It takes all that information and pulls it into a forecast. It's got some recessionary tools in there to do some planning and what-if analysis on that. It's based on the detailed data that we get and it also allows you to get granular in terms of, you know, what's happening with property tax versus sales tax, what's happening with compensation when it comes to salaries versus fringe benefits or non-personnel costs so that you can really drill down and be much, get a more accurate picture through your crystal ball gazing, if you will, for the future, okay? So let me share with you some of our observations of your existing forecast that you all saw as part of the adoption of the budget and is included in the budget document as well is the outcome of that. And let me talk first about, you know, the great things that are going on that you already have here, is that you are, you know, you're forecasting revenues by type, which is important to do because property tax doesn't grow at the same rate as sales tax or as utility tax, et cetera. And so, you know, being able to isolate that is important. It's based on historical trends. There was a look back to see what, you know, to help inform what the projections are for the future and that's helpful. The key assumptions are very clear in terms of what's in the model. It identified what the needs were in terms of capital and debt services, primarily in the area of transfers out of the general fund, right, to other funds. It complies with state law and what our best practices are and that it is a long-range forecast of at least more than five years and it is tying back to your historical data. There are some opportunities for improvement, though, and that's what you're seeing here on the right-hand side where it relates to, you know, that right now the model doesn't really have anything in it with respect to recessionary impact. And that's something that I think is important for you to keep your eye on, especially as economists are starting to talk about the possibility of a recessionary period that we could be going through in the next couple of years. And I think it's important for us to see what those impacts are. You know, right now, the model that you are currently using extends your expenditures based on a certain overall inflationary assumption and it's done based on department totals. But really, the power of a financial forecast is to really understand the nature of the expenditures that you have. And let's face it, personnel costs grow at a different rate than do perhaps, you know, services and supplies or, you know, capital improvement needs. And so it's important to be able to isolate that and look at that on a, by type basis rather than by department. The model also doesn't really give a very clear picture about what that annual gap is between what the revenues are that you're bringing in and the expenses that you're spending. And you know, the thing that pains me about, you know, the state forms that, and this is not unique in Washington State, it's in a lot of other states as well, is that you look at what your beginning reserves are or fund balances are and then you add your revenues and that's what you have to spend. And then you plan out what your expenditures are and then you tuck some more money aside for your reserves for next year and they both equal. And people say, well, that's a balanced budget, but no, it's not, especially if you're starting to draw down the piggy bank by $4 million this next year. And that's important to isolate for you as a decision-makers. And so that's something that can be helpful. And also whether the minimum reserve goals are being met. I know there's conversation about that when you're adopting the budget, but a forecast really should be able to display that and help you understand how we're managing the reserve policies that we have and are we hitting the target there? We've incorporated a longer-range forecast in this and we think that that makes sense on an ongoing basis. The other component that is going to be important for you, I think, long-term is that we're seeing the dwind, and you know it, the dwindling resources that are available for roadway improvements, for parks infrastructure, all these different things that there might not be any other, you know, funding sources available to keep up your roads or your parks to where you want them to be. The general fund's going to have to bear that to the extent that it's important for you to do that. And so being able to incorporate under-funded, unfunded capital needs is something that is going to be really important, I think, not only today but for the long-term as well. So, so let's talk a little bit about your reserve policies. Right now, you have a minimum reserve policy that's equivalent to 5% of your annual operating expenditures. And if you think about that from an annual basis, 12 months, that's less than one month. And let me give you another shock and awe component of this is that your sales tax revenue of a total general fund budget of about 20 million, just make the math easy here, right? Your current sales taxes are about $5 million, about $5 million in total. Sales taxes are one of the most economically volatile revenue sources that we see, you know, here in the state, right? And during a recession, they could actually go down by 10 or 15%. And if your sales tax revenues went down by 10% as part of a recession, that would be a reduction of $500,000. Out of a $20 million budget, not that big, as big of a deal, right? But on a $20 million budget, a 5% reserve level is equivalent to $1 million. You would have shot through half of that minimum reserve level if you allowed it to drop to that level. And it's not giving you the cushion, I don't think, that you need. And one of the things that I think that the city should consider, don't have to make the decision today, but I think that as you, as we look at fiscal sustainability planning, we need to think in terms of a higher level of reserves. The Government Finance Officers Association, those are the finance wonks throughout the United States that work with municipal finance, typically have a standard of about two months of annual operating expenditures. That's about 16, let's say 17% of annual operating expenditures. But that is for every, that's for general fund and that's for every agency across the board. To the extent that you have more economically volatile revenue sources than others, so property taxes are fairly predictable. You know what those are going to be because we're a levy state here. You have the ability councilmanically to increase that by 1% per year. And we know that we'll And we know that we'll ultimately collect it, right, based on state law. Those don't really change very much. And agencies that have a high amount of property tax, they could live with that two months of annual expenditures. However, for agencies that have sales tax, that have development services and development fees that they're reliant upon, et cetera, it's important to have a larger reserve threshold. We think that you should consider about a 20% reserve policy that would be a little higher than that two-months level to give you the cushion. And remember, it gives you the runway to be able to deal with any uncertainties that are occurring, and gives you time that if you start seeing, you know, some tough winds that you're facing as you're sailing your ship, it gives you time to be able to move through that and deal with that. So it's something to consider, and there's a lot of other benefits for that. It's on this slide, it was in your agenda, and I won't spend the time to go through that, but it's one of those issues that I think is really important. And it influences the updated forecast that we're presenting to you tonight. And so this is a snapshot, it looks a little different, but this is a snapshot of what you considered as part of your adoption of your budget. It was the sixth year, actually, this, this is actually helping to tell the story as we go back to 2024, is, you know, what has occurred since 2018. And frankly, you know, as a result of really healthy property tax revenues, as a result of some of the one-time pandemic funding that you had from ARPA and SLGRG, all those other, you know, alphabet soup of the monies that were available during the COVID pandemic period, it helped to offset some of the property tax losses, or not property tax, but revenue losses that you might have otherwise had, and it was able to help support, I think, some of the things that you were doing. But also during that time, and you all are aware of this, that, you know, compensation and benefits were trailing behind competitive agencies, and there were some decisions that you made the last couple of years to address that. Well, your, your reserves were growing, and that's what the graph shows on the left-hand side. That's that piggy bank, right? And it grew up to about $13 million by the time we finished projected 2023. There were some changes that were made in 2024. The annexation of the FIRE services went into full effect by then, and there was a net negative impact on the general fund of about $1 million per year. And then there were some other compensation adjustments that you needed to do to be able to recruit and retain employees, and it has created a gap. And as we look, and again, from a context perspective, this is just the snapshot about, you know, how are we spending, how are we receiving money and how are we spending money? And when you look at this on the revenue side, we talked about sales tax, we talked about utility tax, well, sales tax primarily. Sales tax, utility tax a little bit, has some volatility, development fees, business licenses, which is a really small part of the pie, and some of the other taxes. But if you were to look at these, you know, five buckets right here, you know, 50, almost close to 60% of your revenue sources do have volatility, and that's not uncommon. We see that here in Washington State, primarily because of the cap that there is in terms of the property tax levy that's allowed to be moved forward without voter approval. And so when your, you know, expenses, your revenues are only able to grow by 1%, but your expenses may grow by greater than that, there tends to be more of a, of a push towards economic development that includes sales tax revenues and other things. But that has some volatility to it, and it helps speak to the reserve issues. But when we look at the right-hand side in terms of what your expenditures are, salaries and benefits make up pretty much two-thirds of what you're, you're, you're spending in terms of providing services, and that's not uncommon. And so it's important to just remember that composition as we look at what the future might hold and as we do the forecasting. So let me talk about some foundational assumptions that are built into this forecast. If anybody, it's funny, if I polled all seven of you in terms of what you think the impacts are going to be with respect to tariffs and monetary policy over the next, gosh, two months, let alone year, there'd probably be seven different answers, right? And we see it ebbing and flowing and changing on a day-to-day or week-to-week and a month-to-month basis. So there are no assumptions that are built into here with respect to what those impacts could be, and that's something we have to watch very closely, you know, when it's impacting a whole variety of different things. Economists, though, do believe that there is the potential for a recession in the next couple of years by 2027. And so we have built in a, an assumption for a mild recessionary impact in 2027. And given, as I mentioned earlier, the, historically, it's been about every seven to eight years, we've been a little conservative in assuming that that might, you know, happen every seven years. As well as from an inflationary perspective, again, knowing that we parked off this conversation about what might happen with monetary policy, tariffs, et cetera. On a baseline level, a lot of economists are thinking that about 3.5% is a good, realistically conservative basis upon which to assume inflation would happen in the future. And so we've got that as a placeholder assumption as it comes to inflationary impacts. There, other than what you currently are funding with respect to, you know, backfilling that your streets needs, backfilling, you know, a few other capital needs that you currently have in there, there are, there's no funding in the, in this forecast with respect to underfunded or unfunded capital projects that you might have. So if you wanted to invest in a park or other things that are not already included and funded in your long-range capital plan, we have not added that into this. And on debt service, there's no assumption with respect to any new debt. The assumption is that you would be continuing to fund out that existing debt, which goes until 2048-ish, somewhere in that timeframe. So it's well through this model, of course. Again, I mentioned that these assumptions are really a key to understanding and valuing the outcome of the forecast, and that's why I wanted to spend a little time on that. So there are these seven buckets on the revenue and reserve assumption side that I want to just cover very briefly. Property taxes, which is, you know, your second-largest revenue source after, after sales tax. The assumption is that the 1% increase would continue per year, but there is no expectation with respect to any use of the existing $2.5 million that you have a bank capacity, okay? That bank capacity is still sitting there. You had the exercise, the right to exercise that if you choose, but the forecast does not make any assumptions with respect to that. Sales tax has about a 3.5% growth factor. Typically, you would see about 4% in typical years, but I think that there's some shock and awe that has happened in the last couple of years post-pandemic, and we had all this pent-up demand of wanting to, you know, spend money after we got out of the pandemic, and people were buying cars and other things like that. And we've seen sales tax soften over the last couple of years, and in fact, it almost went flatline, I think, this, this, this past year. And so there's a, there's an assumption that basically mirrors what inflationary impacts would be, about 3.5%. Business licenses are pretty small. It's an assumption that there might be some growth there, but that's a real small one. Utility taxes is very similar to what you had in your current forecast. The composite growth is about 3%, and where there might be some that are a little higher, maybe on electric side or solid waste side. Cable is typically stagnant because of all the cord cutting that's going on, and so you're not seeing cable telecommunications growing at the same rate as some of the other utilities. Development fees, assuming some, some very basic growth there. However, there's no anticipated significant development in the current forecast right now. We knew that there's some projects that you currently have in the, on the horizon, but nothing that really moves the needle significantly when it comes to community development fees. Investment earnings, you're earning, you know, some good rates right now comparatively speaking. It's expected that a lot of people are, economists and investment advisors are expecting those to soften over the next few years. So we have that mirroring, that softening, going down to about 3.5% investment return rate by '27 that might have down to about, you know, 3% by 2029 and keeping it thereafter. Remember, it wasn't too long ago, 10 years ago, that we were at 0.5% or something like that return. You could almost, you know, put money under a mattress and collect more interest than you could by putting it in a, in a long-term T-bill or something. Minimum reserve levels have captured your 5% minimum reserve policies you currently have it, but it was also incorporated in another line on the graphs that you're going to see that assumes a 20% goal based on our recommendations. You all have to make some decisions with respect to what you want to do with reserve policy, but it's at least for you to be able to see what that looks like and what the impacts of that could be. On the expenditure side, non-personnel costs, we have this, you know, inflationary assumption of 3.5%. You have, you know, another big bucket that you have, and you know about this, as part of your budget, you made some changes over the last couple of years to move IT into kind of a separate fund, if you will, that charges back, you know, its services to general fund and others. And so we have that in there. It's assumed about a 4% growth. Some of that influenced by salary costs, which I'm about to talk about. No new debt service, already talked about that. But as we talked about here, is that the forecast now breaks all this out by type. And so we've isolated salaries versus benefits versus pension costs and other things. And so we have some different assumptions there. Salaries, we've got a placeholder assumption. Placeholder assumption, that's subject to meet and confer, of course, but a placeholder assumption of about 4% growth on that. No significant change, no, no changes really in your staffing levels, and also your existing MOUs are incorporated within the, in the forecast. Fringe benefits, about a 5% growth, and that's kind of a combination between medical costs, which we see growing at a faster rate than we do some of the other fringe costs that you might incur. And so placeholder assumption there, about 5% pension costs, based on the most recent information that we have from, from WAPR's in terms of your pension requirements. We've also incorporated in the model an expenditure savings assumption. And in some years, you have spent pretty close to the line in terms of what was appropriated, but in other years, there was money left on the table because, you know, things got done, or things may have been maybe deferred, depending on where you were with staffing, but there were expenditure savings. And so we've got a placeholder assumption in here of about 5% as it relates to vacancy as well as non-personnel costs. I know that there's been a big push in terms of being able to staff at a full level, and as we start seeing that positions are staffed, we might need to trim that down, but I think it's a good placeholder assumption in terms of on the future years. So that's beyond the two-year budget that you have, '25 and '26. '27 in the future years, we have a placeholder assumption for expenditure savings of 5% to give you a more realistic, but yet conservative view of what the future might look like. So instead of budgeting at 100%, you're still budgeting at 100%, but in those out-years, based on historical trends, there's typically a little bit of money that is not spent. And so that's what we have incorporated there. So what does all of those assumptions mean? I think that, you know, as we talked about in the past, that your historical surpluses have really helped you get to where you are. We talked about some of the pandemic issues as it relates to some of the one-time infusion of revenues that you had, and you've programmed in terms of how you're going to use some of those, but some of those were also able to help you get, get by in the last couple of years. But, you know, there, there are a couple of truths in that, you know, compensation benefit changes that were made had an impact on your cost of providing services to the community, as did the FIRE annexation, which was important to do. And you made a conscious decision, totally get it, about, you know, not continuing to levy what you could have levied. You reduced that, you know, and reduced to what the, the amount of the levy was, thinking about with the property owners and the impacts on them, and that's fine. But there was a negative impact on the general fund that's going to have to be viewed, and that is having an impact on this forecast. And there is a gap that does exist in those future years.
What would have been our impact if we would have went with our own FIRE department?
If you were to have your own FIRE department? The, the comparison that we thought about, Councilmember Sonmore, is what you were currently doing in terms of contracting for that service. What were you contracting for that service in the past, and what were the, the property taxes that you had in the past? We, we're not, we're not doing the assumption about, you know, what happened if you onboard a FIRE service? And as you likely well know, there are a lot of, you know, costs that you have to incur to run your own FIRE service that if you were doing it yourself, would, would be, would be rather significant, for sure. No question, no question on that, for sure. So this is what the graphics look like, based on all the assumptions that we just talked about, using the '25, '26 budget as the baseline two years and then projecting in the future. And I know these numbers can get a little small, but let me just try to use my, the, I don't know if you can see, you can see the arrow here. But on the left is what your reserve levels are, and based on the adopted budget that you had, you were assuming that reserves would need to be drawn down over the next couple of years. And when you extend all of the assumptions that we talked about, the impact that that would have, based on the right-hand side here, this is the annual surplus or gap. So in the years where you were increasing reserves, that's what we're seeing on the left-hand side here, in terms of, you know, in this case, it was a $2.3 million excess of revenues that you were collecting versus what you were spending. In these, in '24, and then based on the budgets that have been approved for '25 and ' '26, and in the future years, there would be a gap. And that gap averages about $3.2 million per year, and it continues to grow. And the reason that it grows, and I know that this isn't necessarily rocket science, but when, when one of your big revenue sources is property tax, and you're only assuming that it will grow by 1% per year, but your costs of doing business are going to go up by 3% to 4% per year, those two lines don't meet, and it continues to diverge. And so that's why the gap is projected to, to, to increase in those future years. And the other thing that you see is that there's these, like, you know, jumps all of a sudden that happen in 2027 and 2034, and that's the impact of the recessionary assumptions that are built into this model, and the impact that that would have on sales tax, on utility tax, and some of the other key revenue sources that you have and what that would do. Ultimately, what, if, if there was no corrective action taken, and this were all to come to fruition, the city's general fund would fall below its minimum reserve goal by 2028 and would fall really below zero by 2029. Now, that's why you're doing a fiscal sustainability plan. You're going to, you're, you're going to take the action that you need to, to avoid this reality from happening. But the question is, if these assumptions, which are realistically conservative from our perspective, manifest themselves, what is it going to take to be able to solve that? And that's what this next slide is. And that shows what the impact of that is. And if we try to manage our reserves to stay above the minimum that you currently have, which is 5% of operating expenditures, but if you were to try to target getting that up to 20%, as I've indicated here, that you ultimately will need to have some conversations about, it would require about $4.8 million in ongoing strategies per year, and that's about 20% of your current budget. It's, it's, there's, it's significant. It's significant. The nice thing is that because of your reserve levels, you've got time. And I know that there's some neighboring communities here, just in the last couple of days, that have been talking about this, and they are really at, near, near the runway, as I like to call it here. You have time, not a lot of time, but you have time, and that's part of this fiscal sustainability process here of really, how can we implement or look at different strategies that will have a positive impact on the general fund of about $4.8 million? Now, if you were just trying to manage to the 5% level, that would be something less than that. It would be something about 3 to 3.5 million. But whether it's 3.5 million or whether it's 4.8 million, which I know is a big difference. Ultimately, if, if there were storms coming up in the future, you need to make sure that you have the reserve levels that you need to be able to, to avoid, you know, and to be sustainable and avoid some of the negative impacts that could occur of having to be reactionary. And so, you know, I think that, that if you start thinking more in terms of And so, you know, I think that, that if you start thinking more in terms of, of setting a higher reserve level, it's going to help you much longer term and be more fiscally sustainable. And so it's not only to make this happen, 4.8 million in ongoing strategies phased over three years. So that means, for example, $1.6 million per year with another $1.6 million and another $1.6 million that in those subsequent two years, so that it totals 4.8 million by 2030, so starting in '28. And then an additional $1 million would be needed in 2034, primarily to address these out years and some of the things that you're seeing in 2034 and '35. Now, that's a long time from now, and the key is really focusing on what, what can we do in the next couple of years to ensure we don't get to what I showed on this graph? You don't want to get here, for sure. Okay? So, the fiscal sustainability project, I'm going to briefly go through this and then I'll see if there's any questions. But, and I kind of talked with you about this at the workshop, but I just want to put this as a placeholder and reminder of the great work that the fiscal sustainability task force is going to be doing for you here is, you know, taking a look at, you know, all of your different revenue sources, all your different expenditures, this concept of being able to engage stakeholders, that's what you're doing here, to ultimately come down to developing an executable action plan. We're at these first two stages right here, which is conducting, we did the long-range fiscal analysis, what we just talked about, establishing some clear financial goals, right? And then ultimately, through this process, you will ultimately be making the decisions in terms of being able to prioritize spending, identify what your resource opportunities are, economic development, other things like that, that could help grow the pie, right, to serve you. And then engaging your community to help then inform you and pass off to this guy here and the staff in terms of an executable plan to, to implement. We talked about this in the past, but basically it's making sure that you have the, the financial resources that you need to serve the community well today and for the future. We've talked about the different strategy types that we'll be talking with the fiscal sustainability team for, but it's good as a reminder to you in terms of the efforts and the work that's being done, as well as what are some of the levers that can be done here to try to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible before you would have to look at reducing services? And doing that through an evaluation rubric where you're looking at, you know, you know, the various factors that influence, you know, the difficulty in terms of implementing these, as well as what the fiscal impact is for all these different strategies. And ultimately, we'll be bringing forward through the fiscal sustainability task force and then to you, some different options, some different packages that you can explore that might range from either revenue, you know, focused versus expenditure focused and somewhere in between to help inform your decisions on, on dealing with that. But again, as I said, the numbers never sleep. And so as we go through this process, we will be keeping the FST as well as you informed about any changes that are happening. I know that Serke and her team are doing some mid-year updates in terms of what, you know, the first six months of this year and what that looks like, and also, you know, experience that will help inform some updates to the model as we move forward. But let me just leave you with a few closing thoughts. You know, ultimately, if you're going to, if, if cost efficiencies are not able to be achieved and you want to try to maintain service levels to the fullest extent possible, it is going to require a partnership with the community in either terms of understanding what those service reductions are and/or what are the revenue enhancements that could be looked at to be able to maintain the services that they are expecting and that they currently enjoy. And I think that decisions are going to need to be made, as we showed with that, that picture, in this next biennial budget cycle. You've got your budget right now for '25 and '26, but I think that the timing of this is perfect so that it will help inform you and the council in, in, in next year of being able to make some decisions that will help you address your fiscal sustainability. So I think we're at a turning point. You've got the vision to move forward with getting this done. You've got a great team here with your staff. You've got some great folks that are on that fiscal sustainability task force to help inform you with this. And by about the February, March timeframe, you'll be seeing some recommendations that are going to be coming forward with you, to you, to get you to a place of sustainability. Wow, that was a lot of stuff, drinking from a fire hose, so to speak, right? So I'm happy to answer any questions that you have. And I don't know if I want to keep this up, or do you want me to pull this down?
Well, just in case we are going to refer to any page. Do we have any, any comments or questions? Councilmember Woodard had his up. Do you want to go first?
Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, sorry, I couldn't get the mute open. Thank you, Mayor. Really, just a comment and then a clarification. Thank you, this is amazing. As a, to thank, the last time we saw you, I don't think any of this was necessarily in place, and it's a very compelling story being presented to us. Apologies for not being able to be in the space to tell you that personally, but we got plenty of time together, clearly as it's laid out. I really like that it's digestible for, I think, common understanding, meaning that if, I presume we're going to put this on the website, make this accessible for folks as we're ongoing, because this is their livelihood and that first concept of fancy words, enhancements and reductions, right? But that's us as a community, all of us, not just the folks in this room and online, myself. So thank you for that. And then the question really is, going back to the packages, you know, narratives are very nice and stories are compelling, but at the end of it all, we know it's a lot more messy than that, which is just my way of asking, if in fact it is four packages that you're putting together, do the packages play together? Just to remind me, like, I could say, oh, I like these parts of package two, and if you cobble that together with these parts from three and four, we'll get where we need to be? Are they going to be discrete or have some overlap where we won't necessarily have to think like that?
Yeah. You know, great, great question, Councilmember Woodard. These packages, and I think we talked about this a little bit at the workshop, but just to emphasize that again, is that it's really based on what are the different strategies that are available that might, you know, run the gamut of these four categories, right? In terms of expenditure controls or service delivery changes or revenue enhancements or even service level reductions? And packaging them in a way that gives you some options in terms of where you want to move forward. Now, the concept is that the work that the fiscal sustainability task force is going to do, they're going to also be thinking through this as well. Hopefully, what they will be doing is coming together with a consensus recommendation on a package for you to consider. But you will have a variety of different, you know, options from which to choose so that it's not just locking you in, you have to choose scenario one or scenario three, but it's to show you the flavor of how you can solve this and the different things that it would take to solve it. And then you start making then your informed decision about, you know, all of you, about really what you want to implement. So I'm hopeful, hoping that that answers your question, Steve?
Absolutely, absolutely. And, and thank you again. I appreciate the common language and the straightforward candor, so absolutely.
There was another hand up, but go ahead, Councilmember Page.
Okay, thank you. I guess some of this is going to be education for me because I missed all the other meetings that you've had. And, you know, one is, I guess, to start off, is, is a comment. I really agree with the idea that, you know, type versus department, you know, because types overlap in departments. So the focus really shouldn't be on departments, but rather those types that all fall into all those different departments to find out where your real costs are. So that makes sense to me and should hopefully to everyone else. The thing that I'm curious about is, when you started off speaking, you know, you spoke to being, you know, incredulous it was that so many agencies don't have long-term plans or, you know, they just don't do it. And so, you know, I, I was wondering, you know, one, you know, the 5% that we have right now for planned reserves, is that someplace common or is it uncommon? And secondly, the 20% that we want to get to, hopefully, or possibly, which is great for anybody, you know, anybody, 20% reserves in anything, but is, where is that on, on the scale in terms of the norm? Or is that the new norm that you are working on with, with, with businesses, with agencies to get them there? And if not, what is the, the norm that's working for agencies that you've been working with? And the other part of that question is, is have you had opportunity for agencies that look like us, you know, where we are? And based upon what you're confident that we can do, have already started these processes? And how has that worked out? And do they need to do more or can do less based upon what they've been working on with you guys?
Sure, yeah. Let's see, five-part question, no, I'm kidding. So with respect to what we see with other agencies and what they're doing, and, and what's nice about this process and what you're going to be seeing is that we're doing some peer research and benchmarking in terms of what other agencies are doing in a whole variety of different areas, reserve levels is one of them. What we see is that agencies that are able to be, achieve greater fiscal sustainability have established reasonable reserve levels as their, their, their targets that are based on the composition of the revenues. And that's what I'm bringing forward and, and, you know, starting to tease the conversation out, you know, tonight, and again, no decision being to be made tonight, of course, but, but just think about that, that, that given the, those agencies that are more fiscally healthy, they're, they're, they're planning to maintain reserves at a certain level, so that way it gives them that timeline, timeframe to be able to deal with it. That said, there are several agencies that are still hoping to be at the 5% or 10% level. I think about some work that we did for San Jose, California, huge agency, different state, totally get it, right? But they're, some of their situations are not necessarily as difficult or as, as different as I've seen here in Washington State. And they, they're focused, you know, it's like, the truth, you can't handle the truth. They can't handle getting up to 15, 20, you know, percent or so where they really need to be there. They're hoping to just be able to stay at 5% or 7%. And so we'll give you some, you know, some, some benchmarks in terms of what other agencies are doing. But in our experience, working with agencies in Washington State, West Coast, and throughout the United States, those that have higher levels of reserves that are consistent with not only the GFOA standard that I mentioned earlier, the two months, right? But also that are, that are looking at what their volatility mix is of their revenue sources are more successful and more fiscally healthy and are able to afford the things that they want to do in their community than those agencies that are just living, you know. And you almost think about this from your, your home budget. I just have to say this because, you know, a good financial planner is going to tell you that you really want to have two to three months of income, you know, in, in, in your pot, you know, in, in a, in a reserve account, in a savings account. And it's, it, you know, families that have that are able to sustain themselves a little bit better from a financial perspective than they are if they don't. And if you think about that when you're operating an agency this large here, that if you just had three weeks of, of, you know, your operating expenses in, in the bank, and granted, you have a variety of different revenue sources, it just, it makes it much more challenging for you. So anyway, I know I kind of went down around the rabbit hole with that, but...
And the only other thought that I have is, you know, any of these city agencies that are being successful? And I, you know, I come from a world where, you know, we did five-year, 10-year, 15-year forecast ranges. Is that capable, is that a capable process for a, you know, city agency or government agency to actually, if we can do 10, then we can do six, and then we can do, you know, so we're, we're not just foregoing with the six-year forecast, but we are also doing multiple forecasts. You know, I don't know if I, that's adding work to the city manager, but, you know, it seems to me to be some value to, to have something where, right now, we're just looking at six-year forecast versus have a six-year and maybe a 10-year, if that's what we're going to go forward with, to be able to really see how we are getting there, if we're getting there, you know, because we've got these two measurements.
Sure. And, and to that point, this fiscal model that we've created, that we've, handing off to Serke and whatnot, it's dynamic. And so, you know, the, the great thing about a forecast like that is to do some sensitivity analysis, is that, you know, what if we assume sales tax was like 4% or 5%? What if we assume that there was a great sales tax generator here? What, what impact would that have, you know? And being able to do that sensitivity analysis to understand what the impacts are? So you can dynamically be able to see then, so it's not just a locked-in, for simplicity's sake, tonight, you know, instead of going through an Excel spreadsheet with you, I just wanted to be able to show you that, that, you know, based on the assumptions that we have, that you now have a tool that you can do this dynamically and as you're having workshops and, you know, work sessions to talk about budget and forecast, you will do that. In fact, this model is going to be used by the FST so that they can help inform them about, you know, well, what if we gave this strategy, this fiscal impact at this year? What impact would that have? Boom, they'll be able to see it right away. So, yeah.
Did you want to go next? Oh, who else had their hand up? Go ahead.
Thank you. No, I think most of my questions have been answered. So I appreciate, Steve, you being here again. It's great to see you. I appreciate the way that you were able to take what feels like really complex information and I think make it really digestible. I was chatting with a couple of the members of the, the task force outside at our music event before our meeting, and two of them shared just how much they appreciated you in particular and your communication abilities. And so just thank you for being here and thank you for helping us to understand things. I guess my questions really actually are maybe more staff-related questions in terms of, do we have plans to kind of bring the public along as the Financial Sustainability Task Force is meeting to help ensure that they recognize the body of work and engagement that's being done as we go through the process, not just at the end of the process?
Yeah, we do have a public engagement process planned for November, which is not at the end of the process, but it's to inform the final decision or the final recommendations that the task force will make to city council.
Great.
So we wanted to not necessarily front-load that, but share the strategies that the task force is considering with the, the public so that they can inform their recommendations to you in early next year.
Great, thank you. Appreciate that very much. And then my other question is kind of a, just a curiosity question, it's maybe more of a Serke question, and I don't necessarily need an answer, but I'm curious if we are able to identify, like, from the, particularly as our sales tax has grown a lot in recent years, I guess I'm curious how much of that is online sales that are being delivered here to Mountain Lake Terrace versus like money being spent in Mountain Lake Terrace? And if we have a way of understanding the difference there as we look at some of these numbers?
Currently, we don't without really diving into Department of Revenue, and I don't know if they differentiate that.
They should.
Yeah, they should, but, yeah.
Okay.
So we can certainly look into that and, and see if the website has anything on it and...
I mean, I definitely would be very curious. I know online sales have grown a lot in recent years, but I know how people shop ebbs and flows over time. And so I guess that would be something particularly as we look for levers to potentially increase revenue, whether that's, you know, businesses here in Mountain Lake Terrace or people shopping and having things sent to their home. It would be really helpful. I, I, curiosity, but I think curiosity that maybe could have some positive impact on some of the decisions we make in the future, so, yeah.
I'll check into that.
Awesome, thank you.
Okay, so, Mayor Potemwalt, did you have questions?
Sure, thank you, Madam Mayor. Steve, welcome back. It's great to see you again, thank you. I can't tell, I have told you how happy I am we're doing this process, but I can't tell the community enough how happy I am that we're going down this path. tell the community enough how happy I am that we're going down this path. Some of us have been very concerned about the initial numbers in our six-year financial forecast, let alone the 10 and 20, but the six-year financial forecast has been telling us for a few years that we're heading the wrong direction and we're running, going to be running red soon. And so it really called out the need a few years ago for us to start looking at this. And we started, I appreciate the forward-thinking of our city manager and team and the council for recognizing that this is what we need to do and take a close look at our budget and understand where we need to go to get us back on the right track. And so, first of all, just appreciate, and I'm so looking forward to the work that our Financial Sustainability Task Force is going to be doing to dive, do a deep dive into our budget and our numbers and looking at our priorities to figure out, and then, and considering a wide variety of potential revenue enhancements and what does make sense and what doesn't make sense? And are there areas that we can be more efficient and reprioritize how, what services we're providing? Which gets me to, you know, one, we talked about the fiscal model, no, I'm sorry, let's talk about, let me go to the reserves first. So the 5% to the 20%, I think it makes great sense. The challenge, though, that, we saw those numbers, right? And when you talk about a three, what was it, three million, three to four and a half million dollar increase, that's just to cover current levels of service, right? That's not new services, that's not considering, you know, opportunities for reprioritizing. I mean, that's just, that's just to get us to the 20% reserve fund based on various assumptions, right? So that's, I mean, that's a hard pill to swallow, just, and a hard pill to sell to the community of, hey, we're going to increase your taxes so that we can have a better, fiscally conservative, financial, I mean, we need it, we need to do it and get there somehow, but, I mean, how do you, how do you say, I'm going to raise your taxes to be able to ensure we have a 20% reserve? So, and but then again, like I say, that's not even beginning to address new services, new priorities, reconsidering how we're going to get to, you know, how the services we're going to provide, or should we, do we need to make some cuts? Do we need, anyway, efficiencies, et cetera. But I'm looking forward to that conversation, looking forward to hearing what our community has to say, both our task force as well as when we start opening up that conversation to the rest of our community. And it's going to be fascinating to hear what responses and what ideas we have. One question on the fiscal model, especially when we start expanding the timescope, and I agree, we should be looking at it further out, but the further out we look, the more impact and of course, the more questions we have, but the more impact inflation, I mean, so we talked about the inflation and the interest rates, right? The interest rates were low and inflation was low for a good 15-year run, right? And then all of a sudden, crap, what happened? It's like, did I see some numbers, it's like 30% higher costs, or like 30% higher over the last five years of things. So, you know, so how do, how do we figure out things like the cost of inflation, especially when we start looking at it further out, right? And then how do we, how do we look at the value of money? I mean, so we talk about investments, right? I mean, so you invest your money in a savings account and get a couple percent, but we're losing 10% every year on the value of our money, right? Between inflation and the cost of printing money and everything else, right? So how do we, how are we figuring that into that fiscal model? And then my final question on, it gets back to the investments, and I recognize that we are very, public agencies are very restricted on how we can invest and what we can invest in. But I'm curious in figuring out, are there other creative ways? Especially considering, we're moving to a digital world and we're looking at everything changing. I mean, AI and robotics and quantum computing and, you know, all of these are going to be playing a role, part of that is going to be a digital economy and digital currency. How are we figuring, again, I mean, this is, you know, we're talking about a five, a six to 10 to 20-year fiscal budget, revenue forecast, we're going to start considering the future and where we're going in the future, where we know things are, we don't have any idea what this future is going to look like in 10 years, but we know it's changing rapidly, right? So how are we, how are we figuring all of those things into our financial model?
Got another five hours? I'm kidding, I'm kidding.
I do.
But, I don't know, we're not going to do that. But let me just say that the forecast that you saw tonight is using some more simplistic and yet, you know, we think based on what we know today, right? With these binoculars that we have as opposed to the telescope of what it might look like for the next few years. Clearly, you know, shifts in the economy, shifts in society will have a big impact in terms of what that does to the fiscal horizon, right? I mean, the composition of sales tax today is totally different than it was 20 years ago, right? For sure. So I think that what's important to recognize and to do is that with this type of model that we're doing here, is let's run some different scenarios and see them on the fly as we're going through this about what those different impacts could be. But it's all going to be based on what the assumptions are that we have about what that looks like. And so, you know, there's seven different assumptions here, decision-makers, about what that might look like. But as we start pulling that all together, it will really help, I think, tell the story about, you know, where we are today and where we are at the future. And also, when it comes to then making the decisions about how you fix it, you know, do you focus on the next three to four years as opposed to that 10-year horizon? That's really what I guess I was trying to really get at, is that, you know, the longer range of the forecast, you can see some of the lumpy things that are happening. There's nothing lumpy that's currently in your, in the forecast. It's fairly, you know, much assuming that how we are doing today is how things are going to be running. But as we know that there are some lumpy things that are going to be happening, whether it's new capital and, you know, new needs that we have replacing existing infrastructure, we'll be able to predict what that might be and to help inform what that might need in terms of fiscal resources. But I think ultimately, going back to what you're saying there, Brian, is that, you know, it's hard to find, to figure out what society is going to look like and what revenue streams for a city is going to look like 10 years from now. But if we can make decisions today based on understanding what today's environment might look like for 10 years, it gets you closer so that way when those changes happen, you're able to move a little bit better. Does that make sense?
Do you want, you have another question?
Continue, may I? Yes. Thank you. Yeah, no, it does, thank you. And I, actually, I probably got off on a tangent on the future that I'll draw back. And I guess my point was that we know society is changing. Can we, we know that we're losing 10% of our money every year, just the value of our money. How, so how is that figured into our fiscal model, our financial forecast? How are we, how are we, you know, especially we start looking 10 years out, are the value of our money is, has, you know, inflation has taken a toll, the value of our money is 10% less every year, so that's a 100% loss or whatever. Anyway, how does, so that's one question. But I guess where I was going with part of, in part with the future is our investment strategy and recognizing we're restricted, but can we look into creative ways of investing money to help us prepare and, you know, build, you know, where are we going to put that reserve, that 20% reserve, right? We're going to put it into investments. Are there creative ways that can get us more bang for our buck?
Yeah, yeah. And those will be some of the strategies that we'll be talking about as we go through this. Yeah, but I'm hesitant to want to recommend anything that might be outside of state law in terms of what, you know, you're allowed to invest in, for sure. But yeah, it's clearly a challenge that you're going to have to deal with. And with respect to that, you know, the law, the loss of the value of money because things are, have been increasing, you know, inflationary than it is based on what you can invest in a five-year T-bill, you know, I mean, that's...
Which is way less.
Which is way less, exactly, yeah, so.
Any more?
Oh, there's lots more. I have a lot, but...
No, we don't need five more hours of this.
No, I'm good, thank you.
I was just going to see if anyone else had a question or a comment. Well, I think you did a very, very good job with summing it all up. And I'm looking forward to seeing what the task force does and coming back with recommendations and so forth. All right, I don't see anyone else's hands going up, so I think we're done. Thank you.
Thank you.
Yes? Oh, you want a three-minute break? Okay.
I could go for that.
All right, we'll have, we'll have a five-minute break. Why don't we just get it back at 8:30?
Deal.
All right, we're back in session. And next on our agenda is the presentation on overview of critical areas ordinance. Is that chapter? CH.16.15 with our economic, community economic director, Kristy Osborne, oops, she's over there, and senior planner, Sarah Pizzo.
Good evening, everybody. So yes, I will be giving a high-level overview on our critical area ordinance update work. I will be providing some background information and context for this work, providing a high-level overview of some ordinance update themes and gathering your questions and concerns so that I can come back with more information or, you know, come up with a robust ordinance update for you all to consider. All right, so I'll go over some council goals, legislative history, subject summary, key topics, supporting information graphics, timeline, this financial or budget impacts, and then we'll have time for questions and discussion. So the council goal that this fits really well with is the environmental sustainability and resilience goal, minimizing climate impacts while protecting vulnerable populations, planning for citywide resilience, safeguarding water quality and critical areas, and collaborating regionally for environmental sustainability. So this is the first presentation to council regarding the current critical area ordinance update. There will be subsequent presentations that are planned for a planning commission in council before code adoption. The last comprehensive update to our critical area ordinance was in 2018. It was amended in 2022, mostly procedural-related updates at that time. And our current round of comprehensive updates are required to be adopted by the end of this year. So the Growth Management Act requires all cities and counties to adopt development regulations that protect critical areas because these regulations help preserve the natural environment, maintain fish and wildlife habitat, protect drinking water, and reduce exposure to risks such as landslide, landslides and flooding. And there are five types of critical areas that we're required to regulate. These are wetlands, areas with critical recharging effect on aquifers used for potable water, frequently flooded areas, geologically hazardous areas, and fish and wildlife habitat conservation areas. And another reason we do this is because it can be costly or even impossible to replace critical area functions and values once they are lost. So the GMA Growth Management Act requires a periodic review of our critical area ordinance every 10 years. Our updates must incorporate best available science, so as time passes and science is updated, we need regulations that reflect the current best available science. And then we're required to give special consideration to conservation and protection measures necessary to preserve or enhance androgamous fisheries. And those are fish that live mostly in saltwater but come to freshwater for spawning. So the background and context that relates to our comprehensive plan is within our environmental element. So we have a policy to regularly update our regulations and programs and to incorporate best available science and guidance from the state agencies to protect the functions and values of our critical areas and to provide regulations that allow for adequate protection of critical habitat, including fish and other wildlife. So updating our critical area ordinance is right in line with the implementation measures for these comprehensive plan policies. Right, so our scope and progress to date, in February, the city hired a consultant facet to support our critical area ordinance update work, and they've done a lot of this type of work with jurisdictions around the state, so I feel very grateful to be able to work with them. In May, they provided us with a draft best available science document and a gap analysis of our critical area ordinance, and those were both attachments in your council materials for tonight. And then staff is in the midst of drafting our ordinance update, so that started in June and will go through August expected. And then in July, earlier this month, we met with the State Department of Fish and Wildlife to discuss best available science, some really early draft regulations, and some specific constraints that we have in Mount Lake Terrace. And then also, I worked with the Department of Health to get some really preliminary feedback on our critical aquifer recharge area, part of our ordinance. And now I am before you, and we'll be going to Planning Commission on Monday to give us a very similar overview of where we're at. All right, so where are we going? So this is our planned work. In the next month or so, doing the required CEPA review for the ordinance update, we'll be going to the National Night Out for community engagement related to this work in August, and then by hopefully the end of the month, sending a draft to Department of Commerce for 60-day review, and also beginning our presentations, September, October, and public hearings with Planning Commission and City Council. And so this is our tentative schedule to get our code adopted by the end of the year. All right, this is our critical areas map. It's already undergone some updates through kind of working with state agencies and our GIS specialist. And so this is an adopted and is an ever-evolving living document, so as we get site-specific information about properties, the map can be updated. And so it really just serves as a tool and an indicator map for where critical areas may be located in the city and where our regulations apply. It also can apply not where it's mapped, but if a critical area is observed on-site, so, but it gives us a good starting base for where we need to be kind of concerned with critical areas. All right, so I'm going to get into an overview of our proposed updates, starting with some general provisions and then getting into each critical area specifically. So some general things is updating our applicability for areas adjacent to critical areas and what those regulations are. We're going to be considering adding critical area-specific non-conforming code, so like if there's a structure... So like if there's a structure that was built before these regulations are adopted, what do they need to conform or not need to conform with? And so looking at that, review, critical area review process and procedures, just to make sure that they're efficient and reflect our practices and what we want our practices to be around these regulations. Strengthening or mitigation sequencing. So if a critical area is going to be affected or is affected, making sure that kind of the first step in mitigating that impact is to require folks to consider not, not taking an action at all and how that would affect the critical area. That's our ideal, ideal position. So just strengthening the language around that. And then clarifying the start of a monitoring period. So if a critical area is affected, has to be monitored to make sure that any mitigation is successful. And when does that period start? We could use some clarification in our code around that. And then updating variances and reasonable use exception sections, considering increasing fines and penalties as well to be competitive with our neighbors and make sure that folks don't feel like, oh, if I could just pay my way out of protecting these areas, we really want to disincentivize folks from doing unauthorized work in critical areas. All right, so wetlands, let's start with what wetlands are, their ecological functions, and then some proposed updates, high level. So wetlands are areas that are inundated or saturated by surface water or groundwater at a frequency and duration sufficient to support and under normal circumstances do support a prevalence of vegetation typically adapted for life in saturated soil conditions. And ecological functions they provide are improving water quality, maintaining the water regime in a watershed, so the hydrologic functions like water storage when it rains and things like that, and providing habitat. This is our critical area indicator map of where the wetlands are within the city, as well as some pictures showing you what wetlands look like from Lake Ballinger specifically. So some proposed updates that we're looking at are referencing the state's most recent wetland rating system, reviewing and simplifying our report requirements for wetland, critical area reports, updating buffer requirements, considering allowances for wetland alterations, and updating mitigation ratios, and considering adding the debit credit method. So just want to say on reconsidering allowances, our consultant said that it's a little bit kind of open and kind of easy for folks maybe to make alterations to certain type of wetlands. And so kind of recommending strengthening that so it's not as easy to alter a wetland. And then mitigation ratios and debit credit method. So mitigation ratios typically have been like, if you're affecting this much acreage in a wetland, then you have to compensate for that with a ratio of like a lot more acreage on some certain ratio. And the credit debit method looks at that a little bit or considers acreage, but also considers the function that the wetland provides to make sure that it's not just about acreage, but about the, the debit is what you're kind of taking away by altering the wetland and the credit is what you're doing to enhance the land so that the functions and values are replaced. All right, critical area aquifer recharge areas. These are areas with a critical recharging effect on aquifers used for potable water, including areas where an aquifer that is a source of drinking water is vulnerable to contamination that would affect the potability of the water or susceptible to reduced recharge. And ecological functions, pretty straightforward, providing safe drinking water, contributing to groundwater quality and in-stream flow, and providing habitat for invertebrates like salmonid food source. All right, so these are kind of maps, what we're calling aquifer recharge areas, so include some wellhead protection areas and our aquifer sensitivity areas. And still a work in progress, I will say. And then on the right, we have a cross-section illustration of groundwater flow and contaminant paths to a well, just to kind of get an idea of what we're talking about visually. And so some updates to this, we'll be updating our classification to be based on susceptibility. Right now, it's based on significance, which isn't very clear what that means. So updating that to, you know, how susceptible the aquifer is to contamination, for example. And then also including our, any wellhead protection areas in or near the city. And then adding our critical area recharge areas, our critical aquifer recharge areas to critical area map, because we actually didn't map this previously. And then requiring critical area reports to include wellhead protection information where those are present. Right, frequently flooded areas. These are areas in the floodplain subject to at least 1% or greater chance of flooding in any given year or within areas subject to flooding due to high groundwater. These include, but not limited to, streams, rivers, lakes, coastal areas, which we don't have any of those in Mount Lake Terrace, wetlands, and areas where high groundwater forms ponds on the ground surface. And the functions these provide are floodwater storage and conveyance, nutrient and sediment deposition, and mobilization of woody debris. And here's a map, it's kind of faint in the light blue, of where all of our frequently flooded areas are, and some images of flooding near Lake Ballinger, I believe. Updates for this section really are just to include the National Flood Insurance Program compliance and in our, reference that in our critical area code. And then in my next presentation, I'll actually get into some updates for 16.18 as well. Okay, geologically hazardous areas. These are areas that because of their susceptibility to erosion, sliding, earthquake, or other geological events are not suited for the citing of commercial, residential, or industrial development consistent with public health or safety concerns. And there's four main types, erosion hazard areas, landslide hazard areas, seismic hazard areas, and areas subject to other geological events. I would say Mount Lake Terrace has mostly erosion hazard, landslide hazard, maybe some seismic hazard areas. And these are where those are concentrated within the city, and some images of some steep slopes. Updates for this section include considering integrating landslide hazard area factors into our geologic hazard classifications, because I think right now our classifications aren't as kind of inclusive of all the factors that might create a geological hazard regarding landslides. And then adding a cumulative impact assessment to our critical area report requirements. Okay, and then last but definitely not least is the fish and wildlife conservation areas. And these are areas that serve a critical role in sustaining needed habitats and species for the functional integrity of the ecosystem and which, if altered, may reduce the likelihood that species will persist over the long term. And so some functions are wildlife, providing wildlife with suitable habitat, providing communities with food sources and materials for consumptive and productive uses, and also valued for a range of non-consumptive cultural, social, and economic benefits. And these are where our fish and wildlife conservation areas are, as well as our streams shown in the dotted lines and some images as well. So updates for these, so we actually have our streams regulations separated from our fish and wildlife regulations right now, so looking to combine those because streams are really a fish and wildlife conservation area. Also considering updating our classification system for streams, updating stream buffer widths, and addressing criteria for vegetating buffers with native plants. Additionally continued is adding a definition and revising classifications to be, or the definition for fish and wildlife conservation areas to be consistent with state definitions, retaining a city's authority to determine buffers. I believe right now it's really up to like a third party, the applicant, hiring a professional and them telling us what the buffer should be, but best to also have authority in making that determination as a city staff. And then strengthening mitigation requirements when applicable and adding a monitoring program for these type of critical areas. Right, no expected financial or budget impacts related to the ordinance update. Now we have time for discussion and questions, so very, hopefully I went through that at an okay pace, but happy to go over anything you have questions about and really want to hear from you if there's anything you really want to learn more about or are concerned about regarding critical areas that myself and Facet and our team here should consider when drafting the ordinance. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I think, Sarah, I appreciate the presentation. I generally like what I see. There's a lot to digest and I think I'm still trying to wrap my arms fully around it, but I guess I appreciate how many times there was, I think, changes proposed that you're considering that strengthen protections of our critical areas. I think that particularly as we grow, that's really important, that we look at how we can strengthen those protections and ensure, I appreciated you talking about ensuring that there, that the idea of paying for impact is not a, like, whatever the, we didn't talk about specific penalties, but whatever they are, they should be enough that nobody ever wants to do something that they shouldn't do, right? So I appreciate that that is something that we're taking a look at because so many of these things are things that once they go, like if they were to go away, can't be, can't be replaced, or at least can't easily be replaced or can't be replaced in any sort of timely manner. So appreciate, appreciate the work. I guess the one thing I would love to understand, not having been through this particular update before, is I guess just, I think one of the things that you often see particularly when there is some sort of, you know, natural disaster sort of event, is talk about, you know, particularly permitting of, you know, development in critical areas or in, you know, flood-prone areas is the one that comes to mind, you know, most recently that we've seen in the news. And so I guess I would just love to understand kind of, and I know we don't have, I think, you know, areas that tend to be as much of a concern of significance, but I guess, can you just talk about how this and, you know, our comprehensive plan and our planning efforts, how they, how they work together and how we're ensuring that we aren't, you know, how we're ensuring that when we are engaged in new permitting and developing, that we aren't creating potential issues down the line with, you know, some sort of natural disaster sort of, whether it's flooding or the like? Does that, I was gonna say to that?
I think so.
Okay.
Yeah, so our critical regulations, well, through like mitigation sequencing, the first step is can we just not, not impact the critical area to reduce its function or value? Like there should be no net loss of ecological function. And so if an area is going to be impacted, well, first of all, it's not just staff that has the expertise to decide, decide that. So we require a qualified professional to provide a critical area report. And well, it starts with a preliminary assessment even. So if someone's property has a mapped critical area, they have to have staff come out. And we do a site visit and we say, yes, we are seeing something here and we need a critical area report by a professional. So depending on what type of critical area, different types of professionals, but they'll assess the area, something like a landslide hazard, like based on what's being proposed here. You know, we don't recommend it's built here, we recommend it's built further back, or if you are going to build something, then it needs these types of building structural engineering. And so we don't make any decisions really on our own, but we rely a lot on the applicant getting and require the applicant to get a qualified professional to determine that what they want to do meets our critical area regulations and doesn't impact. And if they are going to impact a critical area, then they have to minimize that impact and mitigate for it. And we have to monitor it over a certain number of years to make sure that they've successfully mitigated any impact or risk that they would be doing. But the whole goal of critical area ordinances are to protect those areas and to reduce risk. And so, yeah.
No, that's, I think, understanding the process is helpful, having not been through it. And so, thank you. I appreciate you reviewing that and I appreciate all of the work thus far and look forward to continuing the conversation. So, thank you.
Councilmember Page?
Thank you. Sarah, just, I was just wondering, the ordinance that you're updating, is it because they're out of date or is it in anticipation of the city's growth that's coming down the pike?
So there's a state requirement to do a comprehensive review and update of these, of this type of ordinance every 10 years, and we're required to do it by the end of this year. And I think it's driven, that requirement is driven by the fact that as we learn more about all these types of critical areas and the science and how we're going to best protect the environment, our, you know, each type and what that, as the science evolves, our regulations need to evolve to reflect that science. And so I think that's what drives the state requirement that we are adhering to.
Great, thank you.
Anyone else? Eric Protimwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Sarah, thank you. Great job with the presentation. Running through a very complicated, having been through this before, this is a very complicated subject and can get down in the weeds. We have gotten down in the weeds previously. I thought you did a great job, high level, making it understandable. I'm not for now, or to answer the question now, but for our next presentation, as we're working through, I'm going to be interested in knowing, so, you know, since our last update in '22, what new state requirements and regulations are we having to comply with versus what, you know, what discretionary areas are we strengthening? How are we making the process better, smoother, more protective, et cetera? So just kind of work that into the next presentation as we get deeper into the weeds.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Anyone else? So I have a question on, in the past, many cities relax permitting homes to be built close to, you know, we have Lions Creek, Magaliere Creek, and so forth. If, if a house burns down or is destroyed in any way, are they allowed to be grandfathered and to be rebuilt? Or does that turn it into a, you know, the fact that they're less than 150 feet from the creek?
Right, but they have to comply with the new, I don't know off the top of my head what our ordinance says, but I do know that we can't render, what is it called? Oh my gosh, I'm blanking. The reasonable use exemption. So if a house burns down and we've got a vacant lot and that entire lot is within a stream buffer and therefore following, you know, our critical area science, we would say, don't build anything there. We can't allow that because it's, if it's owned for a single family, we have to allow a single family home. But we would require it to be built in a way that's going to be more resilient to future flooding event or things like that, so that it has the least amount of impact. But I will be looking specifically at this update or looking at non-conforming and making it specific to critical areas. And so that's something that I can consider and, you know, look at other codes, talk to a consultant to see if, to make sure that something like that is addressed or that concern.
Yeah, I just wanted to just make sure that we anticipate things like that could happen in the future. And if they're coming in for a permit, to be told upfront what the changes are going to be. And I don't think we have an area in Mount Lake Terrace that we have to divert the wetlands to build anything that I, that I know of. Because I know that was a problem in the past. Yeah, and also the, we have enough differences in topography where, and so the geological, you have, would you engineer, something engineer?
Geotech.
Yeah, geotech engineer. I don't think we've had any of those problems recently. So hopefully, hopefully a lot of this, because I didn't go and read all those several hundred pages. That, it might be in there, but hopefully we've covered a lot of that.
Yeah, I think we have a good starting point, but there's definitely some, some things in certain critical areas that will have more significant changes than others. And I feel like, I mean, we do get a good amount of geotech reports for people wanting to do something, but they have a slope on their property. That's probably the most common critical area impacting private property, just off the top of my head without any data. But a lot of our like wetlands and flooded, frequently flooded areas are in a lot of our parks, like, Lake Ballenger, Terrace Creek Park.
And then we had that one house that was under flooding all the time on that creek right by, at the bottom of 220, Kmart Hill. What the, that's 226. So hopefully we've got that one taken care of. So anyways.
Lot you're talking about specifically, but, okay.
It's at the bottom of the hill. Yes.
Well, our regulations will apply to all properties that contain that type of critical area. It won't, well, actually, we'll see. We are talking about doing some creative things for streams because a lot of them are in our town center. And so we want to be really thoughtful about meeting our housing and density goals and requirements and also protecting streams and kind of striking that balance for our, our areas where urban density is planned for versus maybe not as much or in our parks or something like that. So generally, regulations for a certain type of critical area will apply wherever that critical area is located. But maybe we'll do some, something creative that's more location-based for streams. So more, more to come on the specifics of that.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Anyone else before we go on to the next? Okay. So are you doing the next presentation? So the next presentation is on the overview of the Flood Plane Management Ordinance, Chapter 16, Point 18.
Okay, hello again. I'm still Sarah. And I'll be going over the Flood Plane Management Ordinance Update High Level Overview. So similarly, providing background and context information related to our Flood Plane Management Ordinance Update work with high-level overview of some update themes. And then again, gathering any questions and concerns you all have and discussing next steps. So council goals, legislative history, go through a subject summary, key topics and supporting information, the timeline, financial and budget impacts, and then questions and discussions. Okay, so council goals, again, the environmental sustainability and resiliency goal. It's very well with our Flood Plane Management Ordinance Update work, specifically and especially minimizing climate impacts while protecting vulnerable populations and planning for citywide resilience. This is the first presentation to council on our current Flood Plane Management Ordinance Update. I will be back and have Planning Commission meetings planned before it's adopted. And our last update to this ordinance was in 2020. So the city entered into the National Flood Insurance Program, also known as NFIP, originally in 1980. And this program is managed by FEMA, the Federal Emergency Management Agency. And NFIP provides flood insurance to property owners, renters and businesses. And having this coverage helps them recover more quickly when floodwaters recede. And in Washington State, the Department of Ecology helps local jurisdictions adopt and enforce flood plane management regulations that help mitigate flooding effects. So similar to our Critical Area Ordinance Update, the comprehensive plan's environmental element is very relevant to this work with policies to regularly update our regulations, including incorporating best available science and guidance from the state agencies to help protect functions and values of critical areas, incorporating environmental resiliency and environmental justice as an ongoing goal, and identifying and mitigating impacts of climate change on vulnerable populations. And there's a number of ways to implement these goals and one of them is updating regulations. So like I said, our last update was in 2020. There are some minor changes required to bring the ordinance into compliance with the Washington Model Flood Damage Prevention Ordinance. And so that is what you all will be reviewing and hopefully adopting by the end of the year. And then there's some non-legislative actions that will also be taken to help implement the NFIP. And that includes updating our critical areas map to include the flood insurance rate or FIRM data. And then also updating our permit process for flood plane development and staff can participate in NFIP trainings. So our progress to date, back in April, the Department of Ecology met with the city staff on behalf of FEMA regarding just general NFIP requirements. And in June, we met again to discuss specifically our current ordinance and their recommended updates. We discussed our flood insurance rate map, the development review process that we have at the city for development within or near a flood plain, and then identified any training needs. And then staff currently is in the midst of working on a draft ordinance and are before you tonight and will be before Planning Commission on Monday with this high-level overview. Some planned work, again, requires the SEPA review by the end of August. We're planning to do some community engagement at National Night Out in tandem with the Critical Area Ordinance Engagement. And then we plan to send a draft ordinance to Commerce for 60-day review in August. And we'll be coming back to Council and Planning Commission with presentations and public hearings early this fall. All right, so flood insurance rate maps or FIRMs. This is the same map you saw in the last presentation, where our frequently flooded areas are. So Mount Lake Terrace contains only Zone A areas of special flood hazard. There's lots of different zones that mean different things, but we only have Zone A within the city. And these are areas with a 1% annual chance of flooding and a 26% chance of flooding over the life of a 30-year mortgage. So some overview of proposed updates. We'll be really looking to provide clarity and some additions related to our definition section within our Flood Plane Management Ordinance, providing information that would be required in a permit application, clarifying flood plane administrator duties and responsibilities for permit review and information that must be obtained regarding flood elevation data and property information. And then looking at some construction provisions for utilities and then residential and non-residential projects. Again, no financial or budget impacts expected. And now we have time for discussion and questions.
All right, do we have any questions or comments? Councilmember Page? Page?
Yeah, I just, I have a question about the flood NFIP rate. Now, does the city itself pay a rate, you know, pay a fee to the NFIP? Or is it just the business owners and property owners?
Yeah, just the homeowners. And it's a program, Sarah mentioned, it's been in place since 1980. A lot of that information is really out of date. That's actually more recent than what I'm used to working with. It was like 1976. But the, it's not a necessarily a fee. There are trainings we can go to for like finished floor elevation levels for standard flood levels and that kind of thing, but it's not really something that is part of Mount Lake Terrace because we have that Zone A for the entirety of the city.
So how can the city have an impact on our community members to kind of help them not fall into, you know, a bad way, you know, with, you know, with this whole insurance rate, you know, in terms of, I don't know, education or, or following up on, on the ordinances that we have in place? How do we help the community, you know, kind of stay out of trouble that they get themselves in versus, you know, what nature does to them?
Maybe Sarah has the answer to this. I don't think in Zone A that flood insurance is required. So it's not necessarily, you know, there's a threat, but it's not like we're, you know, living on the coast.
I don't know the difference between all the zones, but I think Flood A is like less, less impact and is impactful. I think, you can correct me if I'm wrong, that the, that because we participate in NFIP, it means that flood insurance is available to property owners in Mount Lake Terrace. But if we didn't participate in the program, is that right? Not right?
So how we can help is when we do development review. So they are required in Zone A to get flood insurance. And through FEMA, those rates are substantially lower than if somebody tried to get private insurance. So it's a good thing for the folks here in the city. There are some stipulations though about building at least one foot elevation above the base flood of, of the, the FIRM maps, protecting utilities. So it's all meant to essentially help residential and commercial property owners when they're located in these areas that have a potential for flooding. I would say all critical areas regulations are intended to help people not get into a situation where they're building in areas that are susceptible to landslides and all these other things. So that's really what we're trying to do is balance development in the city and environmental protection.
Are those flood insurance through FEMA still available?
As of today.
Because I know the regular flood insurance is just astronomically, is just not worth it.
Yeah, some states are really having a difficult time with some insurance. Florida, for example, for different types of insurance where the state has had to step in, et cetera. As of now, there, there still is the flood program. I hope that we continue to have that, but that doesn't mean, hey, let's just go build in these areas that are unsafe, right? There's, I think there's tending to be some more responsibility on development at the same time as this is intended to try to, to help people and protect them as well.
Okay, anyone else? Questions, comments? We've upped that, didn't we? All right. Yes, we have. The realtors. Okay. If that is it, we don't have any, I don't see any more questions, comments? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so next would be the review, 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 recommended commission appointment for vacancy. And that's with our city manager.
Thank you, Mayor, Mayor Protim and members of council. The Subcommittee, Review Committee for Board and Commission Appointments, met in early June to discuss qualifications of the applicants for board and commissioner appointments across all the boards and commissions. There were 21 candidates this year for appointments to seats. And the council, full council, had appointments recommended to them at your June 12th meeting, a little more than a month ago. Since then, one ARPAC commissioner has resigned. And after a careful review of the remaining candidates, the Subcommittee is recommending Mr. George Stanton for the current ARPAC vacancy. And he, at the time, was the only applicant who had listed ARPAC, listed ARPAC as his first choice for a board and commission appointment. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions or have a discussion.
Are there any questions before I call on Mayor Protimwell? Okay, Mayor Protimwell?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Saying that he was the only applicant for ARPAC, shortchanges him. I think the way the interview team felt about George is we were sorry we didn't have an open position for him. And so when the position opened up, we felt very quickly and strongly that George is the right person to fill that role.
Do we vote on this one today?
This, if everyone's comfortable with the recommendation, then it would be on your consent agenda on August 7th.
All right, we wait until August 7th. Okay, the next, I reviewed the August 7th agenda. I don't think I saw that.
Yeah, all, yeah, 700 pages down.
Usually there's a link, but that will come back, right? Okay. All right, next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Councilmember Page?
I do. It's going to be short. But, you know, you know, today, you know, I was kind of thinking about something that happened last week, you know, and that was the proclamation that we did with the disabled, for disability. You know, we're on the cusp of the 35th year anniversary. And I, you know, work with, you know, special needs disabled kids. So sitting there, you know, watching and being a part of that as part of the city really, 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 really meant a lot to me. And I really appreciated the fact that, you know, I was able to sit in the seat where I could, you know, appreciate what was going on. And just a day before Thursday, the meeting last Wednesday, one of our own disabled vets, homeless vets, female, sent me a message. And all the message she has was, "Don't forget us." You know, and I was thinking about that today because I was on a call and celebrating, you know, the 35th anniversary of ADA. And And then I happened to look at the news, and, you know, today, you know, Donald Trump signed an executive order directing states to criminalize unhoused people and institutionalize people with mental health disabilities and substance use disorders. And I'm just proud that, that we recognize as a city what we need to do and how we need to do it and when we need to do it, you know, for that same group of people that, you know, are, you know, at the national level wants us to do some horrendous things too. So I just wanted to bring that up because it really hit me really hard today when I read that, and especially after what we just did a week ago, you know, as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else for council comments? Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor, and I apologize if there's an echo effect. My headphones went out. Basically, I think this is a question for our traffic engineer, so passing this on for the next time that that report comes, which is, it was brought to my attention, a resident was curious why from 2:36, when you get off the freeway, if you will, and probably if you go to the left, but specifically if you turn to the right and come towards the city's center, you get all the way up to the corner of, I think that would be like 48th, which if you made a left, that would take you down to Terrace Park, where we have our music in the park and our movies in the park. But that full stretch from the freeway to that turn, which again, I believe is 48th, and folks who know the city better, please correct me, but basically there's four-way stop that if you turned left, you'd end up at affectionately known Candy Cane Park. That stretch of road is 30 miles an hour, but then if you didn't turn left or turn right and instead went through up to Cedar Way, on the other side of that intersection up to Cedar Way, the traffic speed limit is actually 35. It's possible I invert numbers, but the point of it is that that full stretch of road at that corner where there's a four-way stop, for some reason, you get to either decrease or increase by five. And was just curious why that was the case and if that was something that needed to be adjusted now that maybe we're looking into the weeds. So that would be my council comment, and again, happy to have that the next time we have our traffic report.
All right. Anyone else? If, if we're done, then I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Mayor Tim Wall.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Following up on the Flock Camera Statement Oversight and Policy and MOUs, first of all, I wanted to thank the city manager for taking a proactive approach to get, trying to get ahead of the concerns that have been raised by drafting the statement, and also DEI for looking into options for oversight. I did, in continuing to work with those that have raised concerns, I think there's a couple of things that we'd like the council to consider. One is on the statement. I think, I think the city manager did a very good job generally in drafting the statement and the values that represent Mount Lake Terrace and who we are. I think there's some tweaks that could, could be suggested, but perhaps more importantly is that it come from the city council, because it's this elected body, the elected representatives of our community responding to our community that has raised concerns. And so the council offering that, that statement, I think, holds value, is worth at least considering. Same thing with the Oversight Group. I think, I really appreciate the DEI taking a look and working with the chief and, and understanding the concerns that have been raised and offering to take that up as a Subcommittee. I think that's, that's great. I think it's worth having a discussion, again, with, as a council, and giving, giving that direction for same reasoning, because we, as the elected body, are responding to the concerns that have been raised by the, by our residents. And in addition, I think that there's just a couple of things that are worth considering in the Oversight. I think there's some, that respond very well to the concerns that have been raised. Part of it is just the, who serves on that Subcommittee? Is it all just DEI representatives, or can we, can we or should we include some additional representatives from the community, particularly those that have raised concerns? And also including some metrics that they've, specific metrics, which gets me to also the, in working with them on the policy, the police manual, and the memorandum of understanding that is, that we've drafted. I think there's some great suggestions for just adding some additional transparency and clarifying how the system can be used and, and ensuring that it's not misused and having consequences if there, if it is. So I've offered those suggestions to the city manager. If you want a copy of it, I encourage you to reach out, but I would like the council to consider looking at some of those things and just, I think, adding some fine tuning to what we've, what we've already been doing to help ensure that transparency and addressing the concerns that have been raised. Thank you.
Anyone else before I? Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Mayor Protem. Appreciated the thoughts. And I'll just name, we have a general council kind of rule around, once we make a decision about a topic, it's, we've made the decision and we move forward. And so it's made the continuing conversations about this particular topic, I will say, at least challenging for me, and I think you'll notice that folks that have supported that have all spoken during council meetings about the decision. And so it's kind of left, I feel like those of us who perhaps did not support it in a place where I want to be respectful of our council rules, but I also appreciate that we are continuing to hear the community and engage in conversations. And so I guess hearing ideas, and I think we've heard other ideas from other council members, and I know there's been conversations behind the scenes and work going on to, to again, try to continue to hear the community and to incorporate feedback and mitigate concerns. I think what might be helpful at this point, from my perspective, and would love to hear from others about this before we wrap up tonight, is adding kind of Flock Oversight or however we want to name it onto our council agenda, so we actually have a specific time to have this conversation, so our community knows that we are engaging in this conversation. And I think particularly when we're getting feedback that folks are not feeling heard, it's really important that we are having these conversations, and I want folks to know that we are having these conversations, but I think for them to do that, they really, we need to do it in, in this space, and we need to collectively do it as a body. And so I guess that would be my ask, is that we find a council meeting, I know our next council meeting looks pretty light, so maybe that is a good space for us to have some conversation about some of this timely, you know, suggestions that have come from our community, that have come from other council members, and hopefully make some decisions about how we move forward so that folks can understand where we stand and how we got there, and there's an opportunity to not revisit the conversation, and I think that's already been, the decisions that have already been made, but to have a, you know, collective conversation about what is next. So that would be my ask, and would love to ensure that staff understand that there's enough folks on this council that support that ask so that it gets on the agenda.
Councilmember Salmore?
Sure.
Because we, we did vote on it, and you're saying there's going to be some changes or just how we look at the data? Because we should, oh, go ahead.
Well, who's, you don't understand the ask from Brian or from me?
From you.
Okay, then I would, yeah, I'd be happy to clarify that. So, I mean, we've had conversation about Flock and how we, how Oversight looks about that pretty much every meeting since we made that, that decision. And again, every single person on this council outside of Councilmember Woodard and I have spoken about Flock after that decision was made, including you. And so I think what would be helpful is that, you know, we made the decision to proceed with this tool. There is a desire from, both council members have stated, as well as community has given significant feedback, that they would like to have some structure around how that, how Oversight is conducted and what that looks like. And we've had it in council comments and kind of unofficial forums, but we haven't, ooh, brought it back into this, I'm coordinated even in the best of times, Joe. But we haven't brought it back into this space to, maybe the decision is that we don't want to do any of that, but I think we need to have that conversation as a council to both respond and respond in a space where people have the opportunity to weigh in and not have it be, again, like, I haven't engaged in those conversations during council comments when others have weighed in, because I want to be respectful that we have made a decision about the use of that tool, but I also recognize there's continuing conversation about how that tool is used, and I think a desire to, to have some additional conversation at the council level and hopefully a collective decision about how we move forward.
Also, Mayor Protem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor, yeah. I appreciate that, thank you, Councilmember Murray. I, I, I think, to be clear, to try and answer, I think, Councilmember Salmore's question, we're not revisiting the decision that was made. I think what we're asking for is looking at how the system is utilized and putting some guardrails on it that provides safety, that provide assurance to our community that it's not going to be misused. And so transparency and assurance that, because the concerns, as I understand them and working with the community members, is not about how our police is using this system, is how other agencies outside of our police potentially could be used, or if the, if the information is shared in a way that is beyond what our original intent was. And so we just, I, I think we would just want to try to assure our residents that it's not going to be misused, and we're going to put some, some guardrails around what our original intent was to make sure that it stays in its lane and that there's transparency and oversight in doing so.
Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor. I guess I will ask again, is that something that we can get put on the agenda for the next meeting?
Is there a consensus to put that on the agenda for the next meeting?
Next week?
Next meeting.
Oh, next meeting. How, how long is the agenda?
There's the community engagement plan and then the consent agenda for the appointment to R-PAC tonight.
Okay.
Then I guess that what's important for that meeting is that it's clear what the purpose of that meeting's going to be about and what it's not going to be about, so that we can get work done, you know?
Yeah, we're not revisiting the decision, we're focusing on...
I'll do it.
So, yeah, again, to be clear, I guess the ask, the agenda item would be to review the, is, is not to revisit the decision that was made. It is, and so we want to stay focused on providing Oversight and guardrails to ensure that the use of the system is in, follows the intent that the council adopted it in. And so I think the, to me, I'd like us to visit the vision statement and whether it should come from council, or, or another possibility is to keep, keep the statement this, you know, from the city manager, but then potentially turn that, those values into a resolution from council to the, to the community. Another would be the Oversight Body and potentially the makeup of that body and the structure, in other words, and then, and then what, some of the key areas that that body will have Oversight on, I guess, some of the metrics to, I mean, I guess, I've got some, I've got pages of notes, so, but the idea would be to, there's, I think, some, some specific suggestions on, on the things we want to have some Oversight on and provide some transparency on. There are some specific suggestions to provide guardrails in the policy, you know, the police policy manual, and some specific suggestions on some clauses in the memorandum of understanding with other agencies that are using, requesting use of our data. I, I think they're really very, to me, they're, they're, they're simple, reasonable asks that address their concerns, that, that should be easy for us to be able to, you know, help ensure and reassure our residents that are concerned with how the system is going to be used. Help?
Councilmember Ryan?
Thank you, Mayor. And adding on to Mayor Protem's Oversight and body and structure, if we could have someone, someone here or staff, if there are any examples of this utilized in our state, what are they? Maybe we could come up with what that Subcommittee or Oversight Group would look like, you know, something like that. And try to, I don't know, and then, you know, if it gets too big, maybe we'll have to start talking about opening up a police advisory group. So, but then again, we're talking about budget, and that's going to be staff time and police time, so we have to consider costs also. So something to think about for our meeting. Thank you.
Anyone else? Did you get your answer? Because I'm about ready to adjourn the meeting. Okay, then I can adjourn the meeting? Or adjourn?
Good night, everybody.